If we could go ahead and call our meeting to order, please. If we could ask everyone to stand for a moment of silence and then we'll ask Ms. Erdley to lead us in the pledge of the flag.
Pledge?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Shall we call the roll?
Yes. Ms. Singer-Erdley?
Here.
Mr. Lesby?
Here.
Ms. Lesby Mitchell?
Here.
Ms. Tingle-Sames?
Here.
Mr. Shawalter?
Here.
Mr. Stone?
Here.
Ms. Tackett?
Here.
Mr. Thompson?
Here.
Thank you. We have a quorum. And David, thank you for toughening it out to be here tonight. If you need to leave at any point, please do so.
Will do.
All right. Each of you should have a copy of the minutes from our last meeting of January the 27th. If you'd like to take a moment to look those over for any possible corrections or additions.
Motion, Mayor.
Motion for approval? Thank you.
Seconded.
And seconded. If there are no other questions, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. Each of you should have also received a copy of our latest check register. Everybody could indicate you've received that. And we are down to the point of public comments. And signing up for public comments, first is Deacon Dallas Kelly.
Yes, my name is Deacon Dallas Kelly. I represent St. John's Catholic Church just down the road. And we are petitioning for a police escort on April the 10th at 5:00. Our Hispanic community reenacts the, what we call the Stations of the Cross, which is Christ's Passion. And we've done it the past three years. This will be our fourth year. So we're petitioning for that.
Motion, Mayor.
Motion made. And seconded.
Yeah, usually somebody from the Police Department contacts us right before.
In fact, their paperwork's already in here. We have been kind of put on notice that we were going to hold this until Father Lynn showed up earlier, but we're glad that we can now go ahead.
He just, thanks to me, had an emergency, so.
And we were both supposed to be here, but he did have an emergency. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Good luck with your event.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Next, Ms. Barbara Smith.
I have Karen Booth here.
Okay, well, come right up.
My name is Karen Booth. I'm the priest at Holy Trinity Episcopal Church. And we are petitioning to have a street closure. I believe you should have the form that we filled out. We have 150th anniversary this summer, and we wanted to have a big street party and close the part of Clinton between Broadway and Eli, I think. Eli Avenue.
Well, 150 years is a pretty big event.
Isn't that amazing?
So we can see why you might want to celebrate that.
We have lots of events happening all year.
Good. Thank you. Motion's been made.
Seconded.
And seconded. If there are any questions for Barbara, if not, Barbara. Barbara sat down. Thank you. Work with, will work with me here. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Enjoy your event.
Thank you so much.
And that concludes the public comments for the evening. Under Mayor's comments, just a couple of short ones, since most of you probably heard all of me today that you probably wanted to hear. But I did have the opportunity to present the State of the City address today and appreciate the council being there for that address. It's a real opportunity and look forward to next month when I can relax and listen to Judge Covington give his State of the County address. Eddie and I wanted to let you know that we think we have found the solution to the consistent water problem that we've had down on Maddox Avenue in front of the VFW. It's just always been a problem there. There's a wet weather spring that apparently, best we can tell, surfaced in the last 10 years or so, 10 or 15 years, and is making this a real consistent wet spot. So Eddie has finished the engineering drawings. He did those in-house so we could save some money. And we're basically going to do an inbox right near our salt barn to take that water down and take it to its, underneath ground to a logical place. Those are out for bid. We expect the bids back on, I think, the 20th of this month, so we should have a solution to that pretty quick. That's something that council has heard about on an off and on basis for a long time. So glad to finally get that done. Wanted to draw your attention to, in your packet is a schedule of the budget process. By ordinance, we're required to provide you with that schedule, and that is in your packet. It's hard to believe that it is budget time again, but it certainly is. Also, I wanted to mention to the council relative to the financial analysis that we presented about a month ago. Had the chance to talk about that just briefly today during the State of the City address. Andrew, Stacy, and Megan have spent a fair amount of time around a conference table working on the issue of, there have been questions about, now that we've demonstrated some shortfalls and we've demonstrated some need with the data, what might those solutions be? What would they look like? And I've promised council that as they do their committee work, that we would provide the numbers that they could, you all could use to consider that. There's already been a bunch of man hours spent on that. Those meetings are ongoing, and we hope to have you, the Finance Committee and the other committees, some of that information in greater detail by the next meeting. So we continue to work on additional data for you. And as before, if there are any questions about what's been provided this far, would be glad to hear from you. Under Item A, on the agenda under Mayor's comments is an executive order appointing Brian Langlands to the Georgetown Ethics Board. There's a bio sketch of Brian in there, Campus Minister at Georgetown College.
I'll make a motion, Mayor.
I'll second that. Brian's a great guy.
Sure is.
Thank you, Todd.
Couldn't she replace David?
David Dabala?
Thank you.
But was delighted that Brian was willing to do that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. The next is an executive order appointing Patsy Rich to the Georgetown Housing Authority Board. I don't have a bio sketch on Patsy. I think everybody knows Patsy from a lifetime of education and community education. Also, the Housing Authority Board is a very specifically structured board by federal law, and this is required to be a registered Republican appointee.
Make the motion for approval.
Thank you.
Seconded, Mayor. They can have it, son.
You got them wherever. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And under C is an executive order appointing Donald Sparks to the Georgetown Housing Authority Board. We're required to have a resident member on the board. And Mr. Sparks has been a resident of the Housing Authority, I think, since 2005, and he's in good standing and has volunteered to take this role. Thank you.
Seconded.
And seconded. Thank you. After no questions about Mr. Sparks, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Chase, under GMWSS.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, just first, if you'd allow me to offer a special thanks to Councilmember Stone. He came out and allowed me to host him at wastewater plant number one for most of the day last week on Thursday in the cold and the rain, but he got to see an in-depth tour of Plant One, led by our operation staff, and to understand how we're treating wastewater currently and what we're going to be doing with this expansion in the future, more so the existing infrastructure and why we need to expand. But we really appreciate Councilmember Stone's attendance, and he was there with our new Commissioner, Louis Wolfe, so they both attended, spent most of the day with me, and we really appreciate that, so. Onto business, we have two purchase orders for council consideration tonight. First is, and these are both pumps. First one is for Clark Electric and the amount of $14,351. This is for parts and labor to repair a wastewater pump at our Bradford Pump Station. Second purchase order is to Lane Christensen. That is for $10,947, and that's for repair of one of our raw water pumps at the water treatment plant.
I'll make the motion for voting.
Seconded, Mayor.
Thank you. If there are any questions for Chase, and we're voting on.
Oh, that one.
These are our budget, aren't they? You have funds to take care of this?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, they're in the budget.
Their budget is part of O and M, not capital, that was planned for replacement. These are both, they've come up, they've both broken, and we've got to have money to replace them.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Chase. Anything else for us tonight?
That's it.
Thank you. Let's see. Under City Attorney, we have, Item A is second reading of an annexation ordinance for 185 Industry Road.
An ordinance annexing into the city of Georgetown certain real property containing approximately 17.305 acres located at or around the terminus of Industry Road in Scott County, Kentucky. Summary, one, annexes into Georgetown city limits by written consent of the property owners in accordance with KRS 81A 412, 17.305 acres of property located at 185 Industry Road in Scott County, Kentucky. Two, provides for an effective date upon passage and publication. Publicly introduced and rep for the first time January 27, 2020. Publicly read the second time February 10, 2020.
Motion, Mayor.
Thank you. Motion's been made for approval.
Seconded.
And seconded, Ms. Sames. If there are any questions, we'll be glad to take them. If not, we'll call the roll.
Ms. Singer-Erdley?
Yes.
Mr. Lesby?
Yes.
Ms. Lesby Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Tingle-Sames?
Yes.
Mr. Shawalter?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Ms. Tackett?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
That passes. Item B is second reading of the zone change ordinance for the same property.
An ordinance changing the zoning classification of certain real property containing a total of 17.305 acres located at 185 Industry Road in the city of Georgetown, Scott County, Kentucky, from A1 to I1 for 15.723 acres and C1 for 1.582 acres. Summary, rezoning 17.305 located 185 Industry Road in the city of Georgetown, Scott County, Kentucky, from A1 Agricultural to I1 Industrial for 15.723 acres and C1 Conservation for 1.582 acres. Two, provides for an effective date upon passage and publication. Publicly introduced and rep for the first time January 27, 2020. Publicly read for the second time February 10, 2020.
Thank you. Is there a motion for approval?
I'll second.
Thank you. Motion's been made and seconded. And if there are no questions, on what's kind of a straightforward matter.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Tackett?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Shawalter?
Yes.
Ms. Tingle-Sames?
Yes.
Ms. Lesby Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Lesby?
Yes.
Ms. Singer-Erdley?
Yes.
Thank you. That zone change passes as well. Item C, under City Attorney, is a municipal order approving surplus property. And it's kind of interesting for us. Normally, we declare surplus property, it's a vehicle or an old junk computer or a file cabinet or something. This time, we're surplusing two properties. A vacant lot at 214 North Court Street where we tore down a home. And also the Frog Town Road property where the farm that we bought to erect our radio tower, but knew we could use what we needed and carve off the rest and recover much of our investment. So we're prepared to move forward with those.
Motion, Mayor.
Thank you.
Seconded.
Seconded. Thank you, Todd.
I have a question.
Sure.
On the auction, the public auction, the bid part of it, I kind of understand how that would work, because we can, the bid can come back to the council and say yes, no, whatever. How do we do the auction? Only time we ever auctioned something else was Bradshaw that I can remember.
So we are going to do this through bid. I just left, I left that same language because the statute allows us to either do it through auction, through a public auction or an electronic auction, or through the bid process. We, we've looked into how some other places have done it, and I like, they do an RFP, so you can actually see what they plan to do with the property, so it's not just cost-based. So it will end up coming back to the council to approve, to approve that.
Okay, so it's not an auction.
We're not, we're not going to do it as an auction. You could, under state law, but.
Right. Because we did, that's how we did Bradshaw, but it didn't really work out the way it should have, because by the time secret meeting was over, we were out of here, everybody knew what it was going to be and kind of stuff, so that's why I was concerned over that.
We're going to approach it through, through an RFP process.
Should we maybe take out the auction part of it, since that's not what we're doing, and just say it's going to be bid? So that makes it clear to, if it was not clear to me, maybe somebody that's looking into purchasing, and maybe it's not clear to them.
Right. I just left it in there just to, to give us the, I mean, under state law, we can do it either way, but if you want to make it, if you want to make it clear and revote based on, I don't know if we voted yet, did we?
We just got a first and a second. I can amend it to cross that out.
I think it might be cleaner, clearer if it's just like that.
It's fine.
I'll amend my motion to that.
Do we have?
We got a first and a second.
Do we have a set price of what we need to start the bids at?
Yeah, we'll include a minimum.
Okay.
The, this new concept of the electronic bid that Devin brought to us gives us the opportunity to consider both price and what people intend to do with the lot. And we felt better about having some knowledge about what people were going to do with our property. And if we could see both a bid and their intentions, then it seemed like a good way to go. So with that change, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Let's see. Under City Engineer, we have, we have two items, and they were routine enough to where I didn't ask Eddie to attend tonight.
But he's still here.
Where's Eddie?
Eddie, don't shock me that way.
I'm sorry. I apologize. I apologize. I thought you saw me sneaking up.
Please, tell us about the amendment to the CMAC agreement.
So the CMAC is, is for Cardinal Drive, and this amendment covers the utility relocation. We have to relocate some water and sewer with Georgetown Water and Sewer. And we also have to move a telecom pole or two to make way for the road widening. So this amendment covers that, that additional work.
Motion, Mayor.
Thank you.
Seconded.
And seconded. Any questions for Eddie on this, on this issue? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Eddie. And then you also have a municipal order accepting streets in the villages at Lanes Run.
Yes, we have, one, two, three, four, four streets to bring into the, to the road system. And Dalton Road, Cross Park, Village Boulevard, and Waterside are all ready. They've been inspected and approved through planning and zoning and are ready to be taken into the system.
So these are routine streets?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Seconded.
And seconded.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am. Boy, that's a good time.
On this particular subdivision, this is before you.
Right.
But, you know, the turn-in to this subdivision is like horrible, because you just about have to stop to turn, and then the people behind you, is there ever going to be, is, can there ever be anything to improve the entrance into that subdivision? It wasn't done correctly at the time.
Like a turn lane to come in. Yeah, it, it would be, it wasn't in the original plan to do it like that. And probably, looking back, it should have been, I can, I can dig into that a little deeper and get back with you.
Yeah, you just about have to turn, to turn and go in, you almost have to stop to turn if somebody's behind you. And this road's starting to get busy now.
Yes. Sorry, I snuck in on you.
Thank you for being here.
Well, I had.
I tried to give you the night off.
You did. You were, you were very generous. I appreciate that very much.
Okay. Any questions for Eddie while we have him here?
I was very pleased to hear him mention the write-in, write-out at Walmart.
Yeah.
That's going to be a tremendous help to this community and the whole of Shottown area.
Yeah.
Five, what, five years?
Yeah. We're working out kind of the final, final details right now, so it's all coming together, so that's good. Thank you for, for that. And David, thank you very much.
All right. Well, thank you, Eddie.
All right.
No.
Do we not vote?
We got a motion and a second. Now we need to vote.
You asked me a question, and it threw me off. All in favor, say aye.
I was just testing you.
Opposed? When I failed. Okay. Next on the agenda is Ms. Stacy Clark with a quarterly budget update.
Good evening. Have our usual update on our main revenue categories. You'll see as we go through here, most of them are in line with how we budgeted this year. First is payroll taxes. As you can see, we've collected to this date through December about $6,860,000, which is about 49% of our budget. We're about $200,000 ahead of where we were at this time last year. And then, as always, I have at the bottom, you can see what we're paying out in the Kentucky Job Pretensions Act incentive, and see how that would have affected our revenue with that. Net profits, don't get too excited about this one. It looks a little skewed, because as you will see, right now, we're showing $1,497 of 1.8 million. But if you look at June under 2019, you see the negative $927,000, and I always say this every year, at June 30 of 2019, several companies had a credit that they choose to carry forward to their next year's return. So that money decreases June and increases July. So when you see the $1,084 on July, it really is adding back those credits. And then, we'll go through this year. If we don't earn those credits back, they'll show up as a negative again on this June. We just kind of keep kicking it forward until we actually earn the revenue. But you can see at the bottom of the 2019 column that as of today, we're $51,000 ahead of where we were this time last year. And last year, we collected 1.5 million total, so. Insurance premium tax collections, we budgeted $3 million. For the first two quarters, we have collected 1.6 million, which is about 54% of our budget. We're about $113,000 ahead of where we were at this time last year. Property tax collections, a lot of people paid in December, so we are at 1.8 million, actually at 102% of the budget. So it looks like a lot of people have paid a little bit earlier this year, so. So that's good. Anything else will be icing on the cake. And last, our alcohol beverage regulatory fees. For the first two quarters, we've collected $562,000, 54% of our budget, and we're about $13,000 ahead of where we were last year. So everything's pretty much right on target with what we projected for this year's revenues.
Good. Any questions for Stacy on the quarterly budget update? If, if not, we will move to the, the next item under Finance, and that's the first reading of an amendment to the budget ordinance with the Finance Committee as sponsors.
I'll briefly go through this, although you have a memo in the packet. With the general fund, you can see the previously approved items, and I try to put the municipal order resolution number with those so that you can see when those were approved. New request, Police Department requested various line item increases. They've had some vacancies. They'll have some new officers coming online, so they have additional training costs, uniform purchases. They've had a little more building maintenance than anticipated this year, some work on the HVAC, so they've requested some additional lines there. The Revenue Commission had a mid-year budget amendment, so that increase is shown. We had budgeted about $40,000 for a demolition and paving project on the property we purchased out on East Main. And after speaking with Andrew, he asked me to put about $45,000 in there, more based on the estimates we've gotten and the demolition cost. So those are just estimates right now, but to get that project completed, he asked me to put that in there. One thing you'll see that changed, I think was hopefully laid on your desk this evening, is originally had a transfer to Capital Projects Fund for what I thought was needed for the CMAC amendment, but after Devin and Eddie and I talked about that, I realized the CMAC amendment was covered in what we had already budgeted for that project up to this point. So that was removed from what you were originally sent in your packet on Friday. Other than that, the grant fund is just bringing on some grants we've received, the Parks Center at Crum Rubber, Office of Homeland Security Grant that police received, our CDBG and the housing AHTF, the abbreviation, I can't remember what it all stands for, all with the Boston Project, bringing that onboard. We have some preliminary work underway with that. And then Cardinal Drive, and then with the Environmental Services Fund, sanitation needed some additional money for fuel and building maintenance. They're self-funded, they have enough in their budget to cover that. So that is all that's in there for this time.
Sounds good. So if you would read the summary.
An ordinance amending the annual budget ordinance for fiscal year July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2020. Summary, general fund, prior year revenues are increased by $186,600. Intergovernmental revenue has increased by $85,000. General government expenses are increased by $34,000. Police expenses are increased by $25,000, and our local expenses are increased by $57,100. Capital expenses are increased by $155,000. Grant fund, federal grant revenues are increased by $437,550. State grant revenues are increased by $261,920. CDBG revenues are increased by $510,000. Police department expenses are increased by $7,550. Community services are increased by $1201,920. Environmental Services Fund sanitation expenses are increased by $33,500. All ordinance or parts of ordinances in conflict with this ordinance are hereby repealed. The ordinance shall take effect after passage and publication according to law. The full text of this ordinance is available for examination in the Zookler's Office, 100 North Court Street, Georgetown, AK 4324, at www georgetown ky dot gov. Publicly introduced and rep for the first time February 10, 2020.
Thank you. That will be first reading, and we will undertake second reading in our next meeting. Let's see. Item 11 on your agenda under Human Resources, a memo about the COLA increase. This is included in your packet as a four-year. This is included in your packet as a four-year information. That's the way we treated this each year. And we, we can discuss further if you'd like, but it's just presented four-year information.
I think I read it and went over it and everything. And on mine, I don't know if there's a way I could do this, but I don't want to take my increase, because it'll put us over the $12,000 level, and I just feel with the budget being tight and every, all of our conversations about the finances, I just don't want to take mine this year, so I'd like to forego my increase.
Okay.
So if they can just take it off mine and just not increase it.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm not sure, Stacy, we've been into this before. You, you may have to receive it and then just donate that excess amount to charity.
Okay, I'll, I'll do that then.
Okay. And that, that amount for the council increase is?
$271.
$271. That requires no action from the council. Under the Police Department Number 12 Municipal Order Approving Surplus Items, if you ever wanted to own a military-style Hummer, this is your chance.
I'll buy that with my $271. That's where I was going.
Getting rid of two of them, so. If there's a motion to approve that municipal order.
Motion.
We want the four-door or the two-door?
And tie seconds, thank you. No questions there? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Item 13 on your agenda is a municipal order from Public Works approving a bid for Herbies. We're at the stage where we need another tractor-trailer load of Herbies.
Motion, Mayor.
Thank you.
Second.
Second. And if there are no questions there, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Yeah, actually, the, we were really delighted, not sure why, but the cost of Herbies came down for, for, from the last batch we bought. Okay, that concludes the printed portion of the agenda, and we're down to council comments. Tammy, can I start on your end tonight?
You can, but I don't have any. Thank you.
Good, thank you. All right, Mark?
The gentleman, we talked about at the last council meeting, the sidewalk on South Broadway. Mark, you mentioned it, where it was, I think coenforcement went to visit him, because he came to visit me. So, so, anyway, I told him I would tell the council, because he was, he was giving me the story of he had somebody that was doing it, and then they kind of bailed on him, and, and so he'd been in the process of trying to take care of that situation, because it ended in a negative situation, and putting him behind, and then the weather and all that, but he did want me to stress to the council that he was going to fix the sidewalk, but his timing was just slow and off. But I told him to take that up with coenforcement, make sure that they know what's going on, that administration knows what's going on, and I would bring it to the council and, and tell them that his intentions are to get it done. It's just taking him some time because of some other issues he ran into.
Sounds good. I heard he lost a contractor, and things got complicated.
Oh, very complicated, according to the story he told me, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. So anyway, I think his intentions are, are good, but it's just, he's behind it.
Okay, thank you. Connie?
Just, today was a great information at the chamber luncheon today, and the food was great. Thank you. That's all I got.
Thank you. Dave?
No, I echo Connie, Mayor, the, the attendance was pretty phenomenal, seeing an event like that. Appreciate the presentation that you made, and all the information that's been presented by your team. That's it.
Thank you.
Good job today.
Thank you.
I've got a few things. I was sent an email, I think we all were, mid-January, about curbside recycling from a lady that lived in the colony. And I did, I did tell her that I would bring it up, and she kind of did a poll in her neighborhood, and she said of 125 votes, only six people said they wouldn't take advantage of it, so people are still really interested. And I'm still getting a lot of calls and emails about it. And it kind of came on my radar that Lexington is doing a new program to recycle paper, where they are having five or six, and I'm just passing these down for the mayor and Devin, they're having five or six of these yellow containers throughout town that people can go and drop off, you know, mail, flyers, you know, mixed, mixed papers. So they're doing that there, and it looks like they're getting back into taking paper. Is that something we could do here, or is there a way we could latch on to what they're doing? Because, you know, it's just something that keeps coming up on our radar through, you know, our constituents. So is that something we could look into? Maybe having drop-off places, or, or even a drop-off in front of the recycling center, you know, where the gates are locked on weekends, not weekends, but you know, after hours? Because I think people just want to feel like they're doing something. And, you know, there's just anything that we can do.
To, to respond to your question, the, when Lexington shut down their recycling center for the several-week period, that affected us in the same way. Prior to that time, Lexington had not been accepting paper.
I know, I know they haven't, no, I know they haven't, yeah.
And it was a, a pretty big effort to find a vendor that might accept their paper. I'm assuming now that they have found this vendor, that our drop-off recycling center will have the same capacity, since we can now take it to Lexington.
Yeah, that would be good.
So I, as, as they loosen their restraints, we, we can loosen ours. And still willing to listen to any proposals for curbside recycling, absent any real changes in the recycling market, I don't have a timeline for that, but would be glad to listen to any suggestions that people have on how to do that.
Okay, yeah. And then, another question was on Oxford Drive, going out to Pleasant Valley, getting complaints about littering there. Same road, over and over and over.
Oxford Drive, Oxford.
Going out, you know, to Pleasant.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that is an ongoing problem.
It is, it's just.
And it has been. I don't know why, but it's.
I don't know. And I think we should have a couple sign, you know, at least one no littering sign up there, so, I don't know, but that just seems to be, you know, just a bad spot for it, so. And then I did have a third question, somebody asked me about. As you're coming up South Broadway, turning right, you know, where Cup of Commonwealth and all that is, across the street, by the Central Bank side, we have, you know, the really nice lights that we have downtown, and the side by Cup of Commonwealth and the Tattoo Parlor and all that, they don't have the nice lights on that side. Is it a problem with the, like, the underground electrical, or were they just not put on that side of the street? Because that side of the street, when you're walking, is kind of dark, especially when, you know, it's getting dark at 6 o'clock, so was that just, were they just not added there?
No, the his, the history there is when I was, we did this while I was president of Central Bank, when we renovated the building on the corner and used the green lamp posts throughout the bank's parking lot to mimic what was downtown.
Oh, okay.
The, the bank decided at their own expense to not only put the green lights beside the bank property, but we actually went a full block further south with the green lights that weren't even on the bank property that the bank paid for. There also used to be a big hornet's nest of wires going over Broadway there.
That's what I wondered. That's what I wondered.
And the bank paid to eliminate all of those wires and go to a cleaner solution. So that was just a good corporate citizen that agreed to help the city.
Mayor, that side of the sidewalk that Paul is referring to may not be as wide as the side where the bank is either. There may not be as much width across there.
Might not, yeah.
Make it hard to set up white posts on it.
Yeah, might not, yeah.
We've, we've, it seemed like when we did our downtown beautification program, that was very successful, we focused only on Main Street itself. And it always seemed to me that, that we should incrementally look at expanding that a block away from Main Street in each direction.
That's one of the things I keep hearing, yeah, it's kind of, because it's an entryway into town.
And I was real proud of the bank doing that as a corporate citizen. Again, it's, it's just, it's, it's money.
I know.
It's money.
I'll let them know that, that was the reason, so.
Okay.
Okay, that's it.
All right. Todd?
Great job today. Heard lots of good comments throughout the crowd as we walked around. The end of the month, Chief Coulson, we got the Battle of the Axes. All proceeds going to Johnny's family, is that correct? You guys getting in on it, Robert?
Rob says just not getting any, he gonna win it.
That might be fun.
So that's a great end for the end of the month, and I think that's about it.
All right. If there's nothing else coming for the council, we will stand adjourned.